First item of business is the election of town mayor. In pursuance of the Local Government Act 1972, members will elect the mayor for the ensuring council year. Councillors, your views please?
Jim, your name? Well, councillors, Jim, town clerk, members of staff, members of the public. It's a privilege for me to make this nomination if I may. Because last year it has been like no other, in all respects, it's been very different for the town council. The difficulties of pandemic lockdown made your mayor or year last year, shall we say, unique for so many reasons. So the new council has a challenge to rebuild consensus and trust with its electorate and restate its commitment to the highest standards of public office. I'm sure the new council will do this and it needs a mayor who can, we know, can lead by example. And we know from his commitment to the role in representing all parts of the community. Dan can show those qualities in the past and indeed be recognised nationally for them. So it's my pleasure to nominate Dan Thomas as Mayor for the forthcoming year. And may I seek this company for that?
Seconded. Thank you very much, councillor. Councillors, if there's anyone else who'd like to contest forward, not us either. Motion's on the table, all those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Just take on the chains of office. That works a second. Thank you very much. Firstly, I'd like to extend congratulations to the new town councillors who've come through a tough election with a high turnout. One that was much higher than across the county. Serving on a town council can be a thankless task, but giving up your own time is a noble thing to do. And I'm pleased to see so many people want to do it to force a contested election. I'm proud and honoured to again be elected mayor of Muchwanlok. The town in which I was born in, grew up in and which I love. My fellow councillors have granted me the great privilege and responsibility of leading this historic town council for the next 12 months. I'll express my sincere appreciation for you placing your trust in me. It's going to be difficult trying to balance work, home life and town council commitments. But the support of my colleagues and councillors, my family and my wife Sarah, we will make it through the next 12 months with smiles on our faces. Muchwanlok will continue on its journey to build a better future for all concerned. It's truly an honour to serve this wonderful community as the mayor of Muchwanlok Town Council. And I look forward to the challenge. Thank you. Now to item two, declaration of sections of office. Thank you very much. And then to item three, election of deputy mayor. In pursuance of the Local Government Act 1972, members will elect the deputy mayor for the ensuring council year. Councillors, your views please?
I would like to propose, if I may, with your permission, Mr. Mayor of Catclaw. I'd like to propose councillor Duncan White as deputy mayor. I've had two occasions to meet Duncan for more than just a few seconds in High Street. And it's plain to me that whilst my hiss and will probably say full of good intentions, Duncan's will say a man of the community. It's plain that he has the heart of Wernach written across his forehead. I know that from his leaflet that he put through to us during the election, that he's insincere in what he says. And I have no hesitation in putting him forward. His history, when he really regaled to us the other day, was that he had been in the police force for a considerable number of years. And the one thing that did pick my ears was the fact that he'd been involved in narcotics. And I thought, I'm using that to know you. But anyway, so I'd like to put him forward. If there's a second, please say.
Thank you very much councillor Tyler and Toph. Anyone else who'd like to put themselves forward or members and hear it now? If not then, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Motion carried. Congrats councillor White. We, if you could put your masks on and to be truthful, we have the deputy mayor, the W. Excellent, very much. Item four, appointment of Mayor Chaplin to appoint Reverend Matthew Stafford as the town mayor's chaplain for the ensuring year. Councillors, I would like to formally propose Reverend Matthew to be my chaplain for this year of office. Let's take a second to move on that motion. All those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item five, apologies for absence, to receive any apologies for absence.
I understand that Pastor Samuel is out of town, not close enough to attending person.
Duncan, I believe you said he was working and couldn't get back in time.
Yeah.
He was hoping to be able to join it on Zoom, but he wasn't possible.
It's possible to listen, but councillors cannot participate via Zoom anymore unfortunately. This legislation wasn't extended, so he may well be listening.
Councillors, I propose that we accept this as approved absence as a working commitment. Seconded, as a mere absence approved. Item six, disclosure of opportunity interest. If anyone has a declaration of interest, please declare it now. Note, item seven, dispensations. Requested dispensation should be in writing, addressed at 10 o'clock and received by the meeting. Definitely received now. Then item eight, Shropshire Council report. Receive a verbal call from the Shropshire Council of Dan Thomas and Shropshire Council matters. I'm pleased and honoured to represent Muchwanlok residents to Shropshire Council and to work with you both as a town and Shropshire councillor. With around two thirds of the vote share, I feel I have a clear mandate in my position and I'm keen to work hard in all aspects of the division. I've met with residents across the parish, whether it be at Homer, Orton, Stretton Westwood, Farley, Shinton Street and Hunter's Gate. And I'm coming to terms with all the issues and would like to hear residents' concerns soon. Any urgent concerns which require my intervention, please contact me. I've now set up the Shropshire Council email address, dan.thomas@shropshire.gov.uk and it's on the website. And I'm eager to help. The newly elected leader of Shropshire Council is Lesley Picton, who has announced the new cabinet today and taken up office. I intend to make a significant contribution and work well with Lesley and her cabinet over the next four years. Thank you. Item nine is to receive a report from the local police team. Jess Ma? Yes, please do. Thank you. Stephen, sorry.
Those of you that don't know, Simon Jessin, they are the local police officers for Shropshire recently. And Stephen Brown is one of our PCSO. I presume you've all been forwarded the notes that we sent through. So we're not much, pretty much to add to that, other than just to say congratulations everyone today, congratulations to the staff. And previously, obviously, we have the relationship with David and I'll make that continue. And we'll be in touch with the staff, obviously, for the tax increases. So also with whoever at the town council might be interested in the local property. If there's any concerns or events in the area, so we can get to that.
Absolutely. Councillors, any questions for the police officer back here? Councillor Tyler?
If we wanted to get in touch with you, are we able to do that directly or do we have to go through 101?
101 is the number, so please, really, call us directly. We have our mobile numbers and the town council have got access to those. But if you go to Google our name, it's the G S S E for Brown. They're in the community website as well, so we've got direct mobile. The computers, one we're on duty, so obviously one we're not on duty to focus, which is a big message. So you can't, you can't, it's supposed to be the force to try, but if something's happening, obviously, you say 999 or 101. But if there's any little issue, you want to log some issues, so please give me a ping on my mobile.
And we've got your mobile number presumably.
The town council have got the mobile.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Tyler. Councillor Grace?
Well, just seconded your report, appreciated. You've got a new town council here, what should we be thinking about? Is there a new mayor of policing charges, Matty Dass, the council, just before we change it over? All your priorities, policing priorities?
Yes, we're always up to date there. If there's anything that impacts on day to day lives of residents. Obviously, we engage a certain amount of information from what is reported online, or reports online. But if you, as a council, want to have a discussion at some point, want to speak back to us, then we're more than happy to look at that. So what often we get reports of speeding, which we have been able to do in town. But we're always up for location suggestions where we go. Any ASD, I know we've had these reports from here actually round the back, come on the ball. So if that's a common issue, feed it into us and we'll just have our patrols. So it's, I mean, it's quite fluid really, with priorities. Sometimes at the time of year, with weather conditions. But we're looking at linking in with the town council in relation to the allotments and the town council election session with them. The, we've got the allotments from Nasha, but not, not labelled at the board. Just please feed into us and we'll, we'll target our patrols and do some of the today's work. We're in the school, we're in the primary school. We're all two, three hours into it, running an internet course. So we're all children out of the bag, but please feed into us if you, I think you'd like us to see that.
Thank you very much, listening team. Item ten is public session. Then we'll move on to item eleven, the minutes. Item 11A, to approve in the document minutes of the town council meeting held on 15th of April 2021. Councillors, any comments?
I propose against, we accept them.
Seconded. So councillors, all those in favour of approving the minutes as a true and accurate record?
I'm saying a little bit much.
Item B, to deduct the minutes of the planning environmental committee held on the 2nd of March, 15th April 2021.
I propose we accept them.
Seconded. All those in favour?
Same again. Fingers crossed.
You might like to say that you're not being asked to approve the planning minutes because they've already been approved by the planning committee. So it's just to, to the council.
Item 12, town clerk's report, to receive a written report from town clerk on action taken to the last town council meeting. Town clerk?
Yeah, I have circulated written report, which you all have opportunity to read. I don't think I have anything extra to add unless anybody has any questions about what I've written. Anything unsuspicable at this stage?
And you have sufficient signatures on the bank accounts, do you?
Diane, Diane's a finance officer, so she's been looking after that. And we did make provision, yeah, before the change of council, so I think she's okay. If there's any problems, she would correct additional councils. But as far as underway, she does have sufficient to operate efficiently.
Well then, thank you very much, town clerk. Item 13, localism act 2011, general power competence. To resolve the Muchwanlok town council confirms that under the parish council's general power competence order, the council meets the prescribed criteria as an eligible council for the use of general power competence in that it holds the following conditions: a qualified clerk and a minimum of two thirds of the total number of councillors have been elected. But we've got 100% of our councillors have been elected in elections. Therefore, I propose that we resolve the Muchwanlok town council confirmed that it has the general power competence. Seconded on that motion. Seconded. All those in favour? Motion carried. Item 14, planning and environmental committee. I'm just going to change the order of this, so I'm going to go for 14B first. So I've been seeking members to put themselves forward to stand on the planning and environmental committee with a delegated authority to respond to planning and environmental matters. Councillors, please nominate a general boost up for the planning committee. So we've got councillor Tyler, Bennet, Grace, Granger and White. Tyler, Bennet, Grace, Granger and councillor White. Which one is this? Is that five?
That's five.
That's five. That sounds good. I propose that councillors Tyler, Bennet, Grace, Granger and White join the planning environmental committee. Have a second in place. Seconded. All those in favour? Motion carried. Now I'll go on to item A, which is to review and approve the terms of reference for the planning environmental committee. Apart from the fact that it says six members, councillors, is there anything else that I think we're pretty much happy with the terms of reference? And if not, now's a good time to speak then?
Just on the terms related to the neighbourhood plan, I think, is the planning committee going to continue to be responsible for the items concerning the development of the, and the review of the plan as opposed to the monitoring elements?
So councillor, you're referring to responsibilities, item 11?
Item 11, yeah.
It currently says to monitor the neighbourhood plan and advise the town council where the plan is meeting its objectives. The ultimate aim from the review, are you proposing a change?
I just don't know what people's views are on it, whether that should be a whole council issue, whether it should be the planning committee.
Councillors? White, what's your view on this?
Well, the wording suggests to me that it is that monitoring and advising then on the review. So with the decision on what happens with that advice, we come back to the full council.
Right.
That's the way I would interpret that. I think the measure of plan is the most important thing the council does, so it needs to be a full council decision. But there would need to be understanding that the on the committee would have the ability to undertake the review and do the monitoring and consult with the public and so forth underneath that approval or underneath that terms of reference. So I would understand it as that as well, but we clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the town council would have to take the decision formally to review the neighbourhood plan. So until it goes that, I think this will forfeit the purpose we intended. Once, once we, if one of the town council makes that decision, it can revisit the terms of reference to adopt that to reflect any change of status.
I think it's important that town council do have an overview on this because we're talking about staff implications of doing good, sort of weighty work and also budgetly, budgetary considerations. And we haven't got any money floating around for new projects at the moment. I think for those two reasons, it would have to be referred back to town council for approval of any major work.
So the town council would make the decision to review the neighbourhood plan. And then if the planning committee undertakes that behalf of the town council, we can revisit this item to reflect the change of status.
Yeah, council will need to make a decision to apply for the grants for available, for example, to funding. So there's all sorts of decisions on the way in there and I think it's important for the council to have a view on that.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think this is probably okay for the moment until we change the stance. Town clerk?
I was only going to say that what the agenda items to review the terms of reference for planning environmental committee is not discussed. Whether the town council is going to review the neighbourhood plan at this stage. So that's obviously a matter for another meeting.
Yes, absolutely. No, so, so therefore, I think, I'm happy if we propose to change the, the only change would be from five to six. And then everything else can be revisited as the changes. So therefore, I propose that the terms of reference be adopted with the change of five members instead of six. Apprecise.
Yeah, I'm second that.
Seconded. All those in favour? Motion carried. Item 15A, to resolve to set up a separate HR committee with the responsibility of personnel matters. For background, previously, the finance and HR committee have been one and it looked before and it was actually separate. Then it was amalgamated and now I think we'd like to re-separate it just due to the ease of running of things in personnel matters. Councillors, I'd like to seek your views on this change of having a separate HR committee that's moved from finance.
Well, I'm in favour of it. I think that it complicates matters and I think it's time consuming too. It reduces the amount of time in one committee meeting to, to discuss matters, were they to arrive. Would it say, for instance, there were issues between council and employees as such? I think it's got to be treated in isolation.
Yes, thank you councillor Tyler. Agree, councillors, any of you?
I agree. I think it should be separate, the same as the dis, the ingredients should be separate. Yep, that way it can be treated in isolation, so, so councillor Tyler.
Can you clarify that this is a confidential group, is it? It's not a, it's not a standing committee, as with other committees that allow other councils and members of the public in.
No, this would be confidential.
It is, well, it would be a standing committee, but obviously a lot of business dealt with by the committee would be confidential. So therefore, it would not be, meetings would not necessarily go into.
Just confirm.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, above business would by its nature be confidential.
And is this a committee? When we're talking about this committee, can we clarify which ones are zoomable and which ones?
None of them are free. Working, working groups, working groups are zoomable. Committees, council, formal council committee meetings are currently not.
Even the ones that aren't open to the public?
And neither can, as I've said, neither can councillors participate via Zoom, participate. We have to be there in person unless there's a change to the registration.
The interim matter, change the registration. So I've got, I've had my, have views from councillor Tyler and councillor White. Councillors, any other views? If not, I'll seek that to begin with.
Yeah, I propose it.
Seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. Motion carried. So we have said the HR committee responsible for this now matters. Item B, to review and approve the terms of reference of the HR committee. No, that's next.
I think that should be referred back to the town clerk to put the terms of reference together for us to.
She hasn't. It's in your, it's in your, sorry. It's on page 19, in the pack that was emailed out.
So item 15B.
Firstly, I'm happy with the terms of reference as written. If anyone's got any objections, anything they want to change, please speak now. In that case, I'll propose that we adopt the terms of reference. Seconded, all those in favour? Terms of reference adopted. Item C, to approve members to the HR committee. For my day job, I work as a HR recruitment manager. And therefore, I'd like to propose myself to be on this committee as I feel like skills are. Councillors?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councillors, any other views on who would like to put themselves forward and nominate someone?
No, no.
Councillor Toft? Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to stand? If not, we're looking for a proposal for councillors Toft. O'Dowd and Thomas to be nominated for the HR committee. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried, thank you very much. Item D, to approve, to review and approve the terms of reference for the finance and asset management committee. Now, we have been discussing that we could change this because originally. Everyone on the town council was a, a member of the finance asset management committee. But with the change, I think it might be worthwhile to potentially put anyone who isn't on planning to go on finance as it's important. Or we can look at them, councillor Fooms?
I think it's worked very well with the whole council taking responsibility for this. I think it's important that the whole council does take responsibility for what is the most important. Committee of this council. And I propose that all councillors are appointed to this committee.
Okay, before I seek a second of that motion, I'll just allow the debate to continue. Councillor Tyler, your views please.
Well, I believe, I understand what Marcus is saying. I don't know how it's worked in the past for these all being members of the committee, but I would have thought that those of us who are on planning. Well, we could then be asked to be on finance as well. It would, I would personally find that quite difficult to do both and have the time to do. But it needed proper, proper thought. So I would be more in favour, I have to say, Marcus, I'm sorry, that. Six members on the finance would be sufficient. And then matters, once decided upon by that finance, could then be taken to full council.
Yes, so anything that's really serious could go to full council, but it would allow a certain supervision by these councillors.
That's, that's my opinion.
Councillor White, your views please?
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm on with councillor Tyler on this one. I think that it should be more even spread, I think it's not sure a candidate responsibility in any way, shape or form, any important decisions could be. Could be taken by the full council, but they don't seem to be that important.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor Fenwick, your views please?
I'm with councillor Tyler. There's enough work to be handed out here as it is. And I think there's nothing wrong with having the full council. Available to answer questions on this particular subject and take decisions initially. What needs to be discussed can be discussed in a smaller body.
Thank you councillor Fenwick. Councillor Afton, your views please?
I think, I'm, sorry Marcus, I agree that I think there's going to be, I've got myself lined up for different areas already. And I think if there is a bigger serious matter, if the six or however many people put themselves forward. Can bring that forward to Marcus's attention and councillor Trimmer's attention and take it further, but I think I agree, there's lots, lots going to be going on. Especially after this last year and a new council.
Thank you councillor Afton, I think, I think I'm in, in agreement with councillor Tyler as well. I think it's important that sharing workloads is fairly, and I think with planning potentially being quite busy. For the, the six members who aren't on planning could go on finance because that's obviously a really important thing to do with the town council's finances. Very important and they will be quite busy, so in that regards, I'll propose that we have the. Six councillors who aren't on planning to go to, to change the terms of reference for that six members of the committee. So can I have a second of that proposal please? So I'm going to put councillor Fooms up, to be fair, I'm going to put my proposal to vote first. And then it's defeated. So councillors, all those in favour?
I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw my.
Thank you councillor Fooms, so all those in favour of the five, sorry, six. Having six members of the committee on the finance. So I propose that, all those in favour? Motion carried. Okay, so that's the terms of reference and then we have the six councillors which will be. Thomas, Afton, Birons, Toft, Grace.
No, I'm great.
Sorry, who were the, who were the councillors that were going in?
Thomas, Fenwick, Toft, Adderton, O'Dowd.
Of course.
And I think that's it, it's two, four, five, no.
Neil, sorry, isn't it?
I've said Neil. So. Wish you'd like to propose that?
Yes, I propose that those six named persons are on the finance committee.
Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item sixteen, discipline and grievance panel. Sixteen A, to review and approve the terms of reference of discipline and grievance panel. Currently, that's three members of the town council that aren't on the human resource HR committee. To allow for full and fair process if we have to give disciplinary grievances matters. Councillors, your views on the terms of reference? Item twenty, page twenty-three. Councillor Tyler?
I was just thinking that you, the HR committee. Sure, there are three of you. Would that fall in line with grievance?
No, they need to be separate, so if the HR committee made a decision. The councillor or member of staff or whatever would have an opportunity to.
Yeah, for the pass to.
Yeah, yeah, I see. Councillors, any, if everyone, if everyone's happy with the terms of reference, I'll seek a proposal on that. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried, terms of reference adopted. Item B, to appoint three members to the discipline and grievance panel and as discussed, they can't be members of the human resources committee. So councillor Tyler, councillor Fenwick, councillor White. Can I have a proposal for councillor Tyler, Fenwick and White please?
I propose, it's for councillors for that position.
Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Councillors Tyler, Fenwick and White are formally adopted to the grievance and grievance panel. Then to item seventeen, schedule of future meetings to consider and approve the meeting dates for the council year. As you can see, the next, that will make the next meeting be twenty fourth of June, unless we would like to. Add an extra meeting here or make any changes now. If not, I'll seek an adoption to take it. Councillor Grace?
We have a town council meeting probably in the planning committee. Because we've got a pretty hard deadline on the Shropshire Council's decision on the annual review as along with the headlines. I think it's important that all councillors have the opportunity to consider this position for, before July.
Okay, so you, so you would say to adopt these scheduled meetings, but add in a meeting on Thursday, Thursday, the third of June?
Could you not make that just an EGM as and when, rather than schedule it now, because we're looking to schedule it?
Well, no, we might as well go in, we might just add it in.
You can always call it EGM at any time, no?
Yeah, well, I was just, I think it's probably just as easy just to add it in now as an extra meeting in June. Because the, the current meeting is June twenty fourth to allow for. Touch wood, being in the Guild Hall because the government guidelines will allow it. But if, as councillor Grace is proposing, we would like to revisit our decision for the local plan, we'd have to have a meeting. Sooner than the Shropshire Council deadline, to meet the Shropshire Council deadlines. And therefore, the thirty two would be, would be just changed. Councillor White?
Sorry, October.
Yes? Councillor, sorry, town clerk?
Excuse me, could I, could I just say that the prior board is not available on the third of June? So if we are going to have a meeting on the third of June, we will have to move to another venue. Which will allow for sufficient social distancing and other safety measures.
I think we'll.
Then the method, would the method be school big enough?
Potentially, I think not. I mean, personally, I think.
You'd give a whole church, a meeting in the church?
Or potentially Willingbrook School might have a. And there's plenty, I think there's options, I think, rather than discussing, I think we just make the decision and then see.
Yeah, yeah, it's just that I have checked and this room is not.
Would it be possible to not have the third of June, but have another date where this room is alone? Surely there must be one?
Potentially, but.
I am aware that they are fairly busy and there were, there were no other dates available that week. Because they have, they have regular bookings, you know.
Friday, Friday's a normally.
Apart from Friday, but personally.
I think that's a lot of additional sunburns too.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yes. I think if we, if we like the extra meeting, which I'm reading the room, if you might want to. Then we'd probably go with the third of June and then do some investigation for it. Willingbrook's might be able to have a classroom or something that could accommodate us. Yeah. The H P or something like that too, so. So we can, we can explore these options, but if we can get the scheduled meetings with this, with or without this third of June adopted, I'd be ideal, so. Councillor Grace, would you like to propose that we have this scheduled draft meeting as confirmed in the document with an additional meeting on Thursday, third of June? Proposed, seconded by councillor Fenwick. Councillors, any other views? If not, put it to vote.
No, is this the vote?
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to laugh, we're last in the debate before we put it to vote, but. The ring, the ring, we're ready to go, so councillors, all those in favour?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Schedule adopted, with additional meeting on the third of June. Item eighteen, review and appointment of working groups. A, friends of the cemetery working group. We normally have three members of the town council that join the community volunteers. It's not the, if we've got, happen to have three people who are willing to help, that'd be fantastic. But we'll take what we can get. Councillor Dowd?
I'll volunteer.
Excellent, so will, so councillor Dowd is, Dowd, sorry, is indicated he'll join. Any other councillors? Mike, if you're ready for the rest?
I'll just turn it.
Thank you councillor Afton. Councillors, anyone else that would like to put themselves forward? If not, I will, I will put myself forward too, so friends of the cemetery working group, and I propose that councillors O'Dowd, Thomas and Afton. Join the friends of the cemetery working group as town council members. Can I have a second of that please? Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item B, the history working group.
Yeah, so before you go on, we have in the pack a report from the cemetery. It has some suggestions in it. Are we expecting to take yours tonight or is that to come back to council at some point?
Do you mean the terms of reference? I'm sorry, I must have knew the report.
Nineteen A.
Yeah, we're, we're sorry, one eighteen A.
Can I just suggest, I was asked by the friends to circulate the report to the board, in fact, I was asked several times to do that. So I have included it with your pack, but no, that, that would be considered at another time.
I just sort of noticed that.
Yeah, so we're just looking for people to be appointed to that committee on, and one eighteen A, so. Eighteen B is for members of the history working group to put themselves forward if they'd like to. Town council has an important archives which date back many, many years and have important artefacts within them. And we have a voluntary archivist who supports the theme and. Should really report into the town clerk and the history working group, so. For anyone who's got a keen interest in or care for town council's archives, its artefacts and history. Then please do consider putting yourself forward for the history working group. I believe we normally have three councillors on this.
I'm happy to put myself forward, Mr.
Councillor Afton? Excellent, thank you very much. Anybody else would like to join the history working group? No, in that case, I propose that councillors Fenwick, Afton and Toft represent the town council in the history working group. Proposed, I have a second, a second, all those in favour? Motion carried. Congrats. Item C is the communications, markets and tourism working group. This working group was set up to help work with traders and other important bodies in regards to improving town council communications. Improving, offering support to trade and offering support to improving tourism. Too much one look. Councillors, if anyone's got a keen interest in this, we'd be looking for four members to join that working group. Councillor Fenwick? Yeah, if you're putting yourself forward?
Can I just say that councillor Neil has shown an interest in this particular subject, he has skills in the marketing area. So am I, am I allowed to?
You must certainly are, yes. You must certainly are allowed to add him into the next, absolutely. If, I'd like to put myself forward, councillor Afton, I'd like to put myself forward. That gives us four, do you want to, so you would like to join as well?
Ideally, yeah.
Okay. No, it's, it's not, we can, unless we change the terms of reference to take five. Also, we'll go with the, we'll go with five and we'll just alter the terms of reference in nineteen C. Unless any of the councillors would like to join that committee as well. Working group. No, sure, sure. Councillor Granger? We review it every year, can we just come on? In that, in that case, can I have a proposal for those, I, councillors, councillors Neil, Thomas, Toft. Afton and Thomas, okay. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item eighteen D, transport working group. Town council set up a transport working group to help get a grasp on what is happening with the town. It is famous now in terms of reference and open invitation to all members of the town council. But we do have a few members of the public as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think the number of members was specified really, it was as many as were willing. But you don't think you want the whole council, so very mandatory member from the council and then yes. Members of the public with relevant expertise, interest would be to work with, work together with the council.
Who were the current? Who were? The outgoing councillors would have been. Jake, councillor Jenkins, Walter, myself and councillor Fenwick would be the four going out. And then we had members of the public which were Paul Hanafin and Eric Humphries, who would, both indicated.
And Chris.
And Chris Tyler. Yes, so councillors, who would like to put themselves forward for transport? So councillors, who would like to put themselves forward for the Transport Working Group? Yeah?
Question, question on, on this. Is this really a traffic working group? It seems, it's reviewing the layout and operation of the current road network within and surrounding much when Lockton Centre. There's no preference to public transport, for example.
It's, its remit is to look at the truck transport as a whole, not just traffic, so. It's particularly looking at things like Shington Street and the issues there, it's looking at public transport, it's looking at the Gasford Corner, it's looking at a range of issues across the town, so it's quite an all encompassing. Because it, these things can't be looked at in isolation.
No, but under its current title, it seems to be rather traffic related.
But we'll, we'll review those in nineteen D if we need to.
Can I just say, Jay, I was advised by somebody who knows from all about these matters that transport was the appropriate term to use.
We could say it's an all encompassing word.
Yes, it was actually Paul Hanafin who advised that transport was the correct term because I called it something different, so. It seems to be, yes, encompassing, comprehensive.
I may sound centred as well.
Councillors Toft, Finn and Tyler. We normally, that we can just have three, but if anyone would like to put themselves forward again, councillor Grace?
Well, I'm just thinking about the connection across the planning committee with you this morning, so I'll put myself here.
Excellent, thank you councillor Grace. So councillors, Grace, Toft, Finn and Tyler, anybody else like to put themselves forward? If not, we'll take a vote and propose it on this. I propose that councillors Grace, Toft, Thomas, sorry, Finn, not Thomas, and Tyler be appointed to the Transport Working Group along with members of the public, such as Eric Humphries and Paul. So proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item E, to resolve to set up a property working group, terms of reference to be agreed at the next meeting. I think from experience of having these, this committee, or having the separate committees of High Street Housing Needs, Ground Maintenance and Property Maintenance, there were quite a few different committees that were looking at different properties that they had an interest in and the difficulty was that this town council, I would argue, could not consider one property in isolation without the others. And therefore, I think it would be a good idea to set up a property working group that would look at the whole of the assets of the properties in detail, looking at funding options, looking at what is best for the town and these buildings, and will be able to report back to the town council as the town council make the decision. Councillors, your views on setting up a property working group, please? Councillor Grace?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we have a finance and assets group, a committee. Presumably a property working group would be, would be a working group or subcommittee of that, of that committee. And that would be the relationship, presumably.
I think that's a very good idea.
And then the finance committee can decide, the assets committee can decide its terms of reference at that point, so you don't have to duplicate it here.
So have the property working group be adopted by the finance committee, so finance and assets? There's a subcommittee on finance? Okay.
And you've got the same, you've got the right skill sets in the same place.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
They are so, they are so linked, I think it is.
Yeah, that's, that's good. So we'll allow, so should we set it up, should we get the finance and asset management? Finance and Asset Management Committee to set up the working group on their agenda?
Well, they, they set it up as a subcommittee presumably rather than as a working group.
Okay.
Slightly different.
So.
Undertakes the same work.
I think it's good to define it here though.
Yeah.
And, and the terms of reference. Except, except that it's manned by, or decided by, you know, the asset and finance and asset.
Okay, go with you, so we'll, we'll put this on the finance agenda for them to set up a subcommittee. And therefore, I propose that we don't set up a property working group. Seconded, all those in favour?
Motion carried, propose not.
Oh, you're so right. Sorry.
To refer to a consideration.
So.
Refer, refer consideration of setting up a property, a property subcommittee to the planning committee and such.
Okay, yeah, I propose that the, this is deferred to the.
Financial finance.
So the finance, yeah, I propose that this item be deferred to the finance and asset management committee. Councillors, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried, thank you. And then item F, to resolve to disband the following working groups. Number ten, High Streets, the Housing Needs, Group Maintenance and Property Maintenance Working Groups. Councillors, your views? If not, I'll seek a proposal to disband them.
Well, they have, they have been, you know, they have been in existence previously, it's just nice and clear cut for me if you decide that you don't want to continue with those working groups. Because that work is going to be absorbed into other committees and working groups.
Right.
It's just to make it neat for me.
Yes. Councillor White?
Well, obviously, I've been being on the ten High Street working group working on that for the last twelve months. It's disappointing that it's going to be melted away, but I do see the principle in putting everything into warm pots. But that means if I'm not on finance and asset, I won't have a role to play to be able to contribute to the future of ten High Street.
It's a working group though. If you made yourself available, you could be part of that.
Yeah, we, one, we agreed to terms of reference.
Okay, I'll take it. I agree with getting rid of ground maintenance, we've only met once, the hotel up in Old Macquarie, so I agree with that. And that was the toilets.
So, but to say, if you were going to make the subcommittee planning committee, then.
Of finance.
Oh, duh, sorry.
That's right.
But if it doesn't actually be, if you've got the finance committee, then you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be on the subcommittee of the finance committee, so it would be a working group.
So.
I'm sure it can work.
I think it was a poor deal enough then.
Have you clarified that any of the working groups are allowed to co-opt people with suitable expertise?
So, so the finance agenda, we make it a working group instead of a subcommittee of finance.
I think it may be a working group.
Working group, yeah.
And that means. Okay, I said that means it can be on Zoom. It's a working group. There is that benefit, so. Okay, so we need a proposal. Are we going to disband?
I, I propose to disband the ground maintenance.
Yeah.
I can disband ten High Streets.
Yeah, so we'll, so that when the finance and asset management committee, we can make a working group.
Yes.
And we go on then. So therefore, we can disband these.
Disband the two groups, yeah. I propose that we do, like, almost, three groups.
Yeah, yeah. So proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Then item nineteen A, Friends of the Cemetery Working Group, to review the terms of reference of this working group. Now, in your agenda packs, we have got a report which is been forwarded on by members of the Friends of the Cemetery Working Group, which will be for the three councillors to consider. But I wouldn't particularly want to consider it now, and I would defer it to this, those councillors when they meet. Therefore, I'm just looking to, looking for approval of the terms of reference. Which I'd like a proposal on or commenting.
Councillor Clark, is there any reason why they shouldn't, they need to be changed?
No, they're just, we've just got to adopt them. Just, yeah, yeah. Then I'll second, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. And. Item B, just as again, they're adopted every year, reviewed every year, so the History Working Group terms of reference, I propose that they stay as they are. Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item C, the Communications Working Group, I propose that we make the change from four to five members of the town council to accommodate the members who would like to stand for this group. And that'd be the only change. Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item D, Transport Working Group. Councillors, your views on any changes that we need to make on the terms of reference, councillor Grace?
Well, yeah, I think we should clear up what's pointed out, it being not just roads, it is about public transport. And I would add in pedestrian cycle road access issues as well, because if you think about zero and low carbon and accessibility and all the other healthy issues that you think about, then it's not just about road access, it's actually how people interact with those, how we get through the town. The tricky stuff that are many of the town, those are the things. So widen it out to that public transport and pedestrian cycle road.
So when the, so we can, we could obviously not approve the, approve it now and we could get the, the Transport Working Group to meet up and work to expand their remit.
It, it's not for the group to expand their remit, it's for the town council to decide what their remit is. It does say under four, improving provision and operation for vehicles and pedestrians, those vehicles being cycles as well. And it's, it's about layout and operation of the road network, so it doesn't specify the name of the transport.
Can, can we revise the terms of references at the future meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
We can leave it to the working group to recommend then.
Can I suggest that it's, going back to what Mike said, in fact, working with planning committee, I think that's probably, if it's right that the the, the property group were working with the finance and asset group, then it's probably right that this group were working with the, with the planning committee. So that there should be an element of liaison there in, in the terms of references.
Okay. So. More specifically, what would you like to change?
Not quite sure what to say really, but it should, it should actually be some sort of reference to.
Well, would you like me to, would you just like to defer this to next meeting and I'll take advice from interested parties on what additions or changes they might want.
Yeah. That's, that's good to me. Councillor Grace, anything to add?
I think it needs just looking at, because when you think about funding issues, it's not a lot about capital, it's a lot about people's access and stuff.
And, okay, so I propose that we defer this item to by next meeting. Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried, thank you very much. Twenty A, to review and appoint representatives to the Brishnov and Shiftnall Local Area Committee of Structure Association of Local Councils, so two members. Councillors, if anyone would like to put themselves forward for this local area committee to represent us and to work with other councils in our area? Please put themselves forward.
How often does it meet?
I'm not entirely sure they meet, I think it's probably once a quarter, but it is in the daytime, so. I think it is in the daytime.
May not be.
Well, they, they've been meeting on Zoom, haven't they?
Uh, well, yes.
But I'm not, I'm not sure.
Be, be nice to get some representation on there possible, but again, they are, they are meeting on Zoom, it will be moving. Thank you councillor Toft. Any other councillors? If not, well, just send councillor Toft. Councillor Rattan?
I'd also like to ask councillor Neil, maybe, can we put forward by councillor Fennick? Don't think that's ever worked.
If no one else would like to, I'd like to propose councillor Toft represents us on the committee. Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you very much councillor Toft. We, there's also the local joint committee at town clerk, can you explain what that is and if it's still meeting?
Yeah, I, I have taken, I, I have tried to find out, the local joint committee was created and it was a Shropshire Council and town council committee, sometimes divided into different districts. And at the time, when it first, when it was first set up, it had money to give out, it's a bit of a cash cow, lots of local organisations were able to get funding for for themselves, so it was very popular. And then Shropshire Council changed its remit and it became more of a scrutiny committee, so that the local communities could invite Shropshire council officers, say from highways, and they would come and be pressed about bottles and other things and go away again. But then they, they moved them all around, they changed the areas, but of late, it has not met. I'm advised it is still in Shropshire Council's constitution, this committee, but it hasn't met for several years now. And some have tried to get clarity on its continued existence or otherwise without any success. So I suspect there's nothing doing there at the moment, really. So, I mean, councillors might choose to just leave this, not, not elect a rep unless it comes back and we then need one, in which case obviously you can elect one at a time.
I was just saying the words out of my mouth.
Exactly, I was going to.
Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. Item C, Muchwell Arms Houses, to note that Duncan Wyne was nominated to represent the town council in June twenty twenty for a term of four years. Thank you councillor White. I propose that we note that. Seconded, item noted. Item D is the Shropshire Council emergency planning. Again, town clerk, this isn't someone I'm particularly familiar with.
And the councillor, well, thanks now, Bert Parkwell was the ref on this and he's advised me that it's, there's a department in Shropshire Council which is responsible for emergency planning, and they used to have, apparently, have quite regular meetings. But again, of late, it's all been very quiet. So he has in the past gone to a number of meetings with them where they've obviously discussed the management of any emergencies in case of way of flooding being most likely. But again, all quiet at the moment, so whether you think a ref is necessary or whether you want to leave that in the veins, depending on the invitation that we might get or any involvement.
I mean, potentially they might meet quite quickly if it does happen again, so it might be useful to have a ref on standby if someone needs to put themselves forward, there's been a few people with planning interests on this town council.
Can I just say, this is not planning as such, this is dealing with emergencies, you know, planning for emergency, emergency operations, I suppose.
I guess I'm going to put myself forward.
Okay, then, if anyone else would like to, or not, we'll, I formally propose councillor White. Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you councillor White. Jay, John L Edwards Trust, which is a committee formed by William Brook School and they have some money in the trust that they give to students that have been a bit present. I've successfully, in year seven, I successfully focused some funding in this. And therefore, I'd like to put myself forward as the town council as well. Unless anyone else would like to, who's not a busy man.
Seconded.
Thanks councillor Fennick. All those in favour? Motion carried, thank you. Item F is the Shropshire Hills Destination Partnership, now, this one is quite geared towards tourism and Muchwell Lock is just about considered as part of the Shropshire Hills and therefore it would be good to have a representation on this partnership to represent our views and to look after Lock.
Would there be some, some logic in having somebody who's already on the communications, marketing and tourism working group to be on this one as well?
Yes.
Put myself forward, because I'm on that group and I write hills on a golf skate ball, so.
Yes. Excellent, thanks councillor Afferton, they do meet in the daytime, I think it's about.
Should be okay.
I think it's normally on a Tuesday morning, so. But it's not, they're not often. I propose councillor Afferton, seconded, all those in favour? Councillor Afferton is appointed. Thank you. Thank you. Item G is Connexus, the affordable homes. If required, previously, we had two reps. Now, when briefly, when Connexus originally approached the town council or looked to build the original Calatton Ash, it was led by councillors who worked with Connexus quite strongly and it ended up going down to about two reps. With the most recent Calatton Ash development, which is, which has gone through planning, they didn't use the reps because they just, I didn't, the town council actually objected to it. So we, probably, this may not be required, but if people want to lay Connexus on the town council, they're welcome to do so, if not, we might just not perform.
Yeah, just a question, I suppose. Whatever, permission's been granted, they've got to work out some details, honestly. The next steps, I assume, will be about the building and lettings of those houses. So there's an issue about local lettings that the council have, we're just interested in. So I don't know whether it needs two people, certainly, I think somebody being eligible to sit down with Connexus and just make sure that that stipulation around local lettings is applicable.
It sounds like a good idea to me. Yeah, I think that's good.
I'll do that.
Anyone else wants to join, Councillor Grace? If not, we'll just seek a proposal to.
I'll go for a buck up.
Okay, so
For yours, if you want.
So I propose that councillor White and councillor Grace represent us with Connexus. It's our two reps. Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried, thank you very much. Item H, just to note that for the much one lock forest trust, Mr Mark Laws is the town council's representative. And in April 2021, he was nominated to represent for years, just note that. And then item I, Priory Hall Management Committee, currently Duncan White.
And also Councillor Toft.
Well, Councillor Toft is on its, in his own right.
Sure, yes.
If this is, he is a councillor, so if councillor, perhaps Councillor Toft would want to represent us as a town council.
I shall say, I'm quite happy to stay as is.
The more, the more the mayor actually have in the Priory Hall Management Committee, welcome another person representing town council, both Duncan and I are representing in our own rights, I think.
I think Duncan was the town council's representative on the committee.
Yes.
Former, yeah. And you're on it already. If anyone else would like to join them? It's an important committee that looks after this building and its management.
I was just going to say, because one of the committee members advised if we are permitted to do so, because obviously it is the Priory Hall's committee. Are they willing to allow additional councillors to join the committee?
In the terms of the lease of the Priory Hall, the town council is one of the organisations which can nominate a representative. There's many others as well, some of which cease to exist in time. The town council still carries on, so.
Is that, is there a fixed number though? Should be able to nominate one?
Well, no, I think one is normal, but not absolutely big, so.
Okay, so you think it'd be okay for us to have two representatives on there? Or perhaps Councillor Penny can go on as an right?
Yes.
Well, you're already on. You're in your own right.
Yeah. I'm on as the town council, but.
Okay.
Well, I'm happy to withdraw because they generally have experience in this already.
You might find it.
And Noel could do it.
Well, no, which I'm going to. So we'll, we'll keep councillor, councillor White as the town council rep. But councillor Fennec is, as I understand it, more than welcome to join as an right. And encourage him.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I propose councillor White stay on as our nominee for the powerful management committee. Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. Item 21, financial matters. To retrospectively approve the payment schedule from the 25th of March to 14th of May. Town park will be there, slight edits on the one it's voted out.
Yes, apologies for that, the first version of this, which was in your pack, when the RFO came to check, she realised that we lost the figures at the end. So I did email out separately the revised copies. And I would just like to highlight and apologise for one error, which is on the apron sheet. And it's towards the bottom, gas from energy. And it reads, currently reads corn exchange electricity charges, it should read 10 High Street gas charges from February, also February to 31st of March. So apologies for the error that it was carried down from the line bar. It is still the same amount.
Councillors, you're happy with that, I'd like to seek to retrospectively approve the payments. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. And then item 21B, to approve the use of variable direct debits and backs payments in accordance with Paris 6.7 and 6.9 of the councillors' actual regulations. Casters, your views on this? If not, I'll seek a proposal.
Well, the mandate's been with respect to
Signatures.
Signature, yeah.
Yes. Yes, we have sufficient, yes.
Yeah, and that covers both instructions and direct debit. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, we, yes, we have signatures for both, cheque, cheque signatures and online signatures. So, yes, so the back payments are made with the online signatures, you know, appropriate logins and security checks and so on.
Just to clarify, is this a annual thing that we have to sign off the council users and processes?
Yes, yes.
And the law and the finance committee sign off?
This is, the standing orders say that the council should do it, it's actually every two years, but I just put it on every year, so I don't forget.
So if we're happy, proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item 22, to resolve to defer review of the council's policies relating to data protection to a future meeting.
Yes, yes, please. I just didn't want those on those meetings as well, there are a number of them.
I'll suppose so. All those in favour? So we've got 23A, elected dated 23A correspondence, elected dated 20th of April regarding Wellingbrook School membership of the 31 3 education. Councillors, propose that we note this correspondence? Seconded, all those in favour? Item noted. And then item 24, agenda items to next town council meeting. Now, in our schedule, we have indicated that we will have a meeting on the 3rd of June, as we seek a venue. Councillor members are invited to suggest items for inclusion on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay, I'll keep going. First of all, I would like to offer an invitation, suggest that we offer an invitation to councillor Picton and Wild to come and speak to the full council with respect to the that is under discussion. Okay.
But I'm just saying, it's extremely unlikely they will come.
We, we They may not come, but they must offer an invitation.
Could I also say, sorry, I'm a bit concerned about the venue. Until we have a venue to be inviting people from outside, which might then draw additional numbers.
We're talking about for the 3rd of June now? So that's, we have to know on the 3rd of June, we can send that. Yeah, we could do. And that's fine, we can have that on the agenda, we could put on the 24th.
Do you mind if we just stick to the next agenda, so to say, because it's in my heart, really?
No, of course.
Yeah, the key agenda item, I think, Chris is trying to get at, is that it should be the kind of view and relationship that the key discussion point for the 3rd of June.
Yeah, so we want to review, to, to change the town, well, we have to, this has been taken past six months, we don't have to, we've seen our decision, but we'd like to make a new one. And you'd like to make a new decision regarding the local plan review, this town council decision.
Yeah, well, many of us have been adopted, have been elected on Monday to review that situation. And what needs to be done, what we're going to do to do. So that's the discussion, what the council decides to do in terms of its current or on future positions to be discussed.
Yeah, okay.
So local plan review and the town council's position, essentially.
Yeah, and in respect of the nature of the plan.
Do you have, do you have in mind exactly what you want down in the agenda?
I can just put it down in general terms, so you can clarify what the agenda answer is going to be, yeah.
The plan view, never the plan.
I would suggest also that the planning committee was used to do as before, has a similar title, a similar agenda item, so we can discuss it in some depth.
Councillor Penny, would you please, please?
No, I think it's, it's, it's one that's obviously really been high on the agenda since.
Yeah, so you're agreeing with me. Councillor Grace?
Yes, there's two things. First thing, did we, did we, is there a reason why we've not got the Ascomider Committee today?
Yes, that is part of a charity that's run by the council and that will be meeting in June. And people who would like to join that committee will be able to nominate. Don't worry, now I have thought about it, it's a very important committee, but that's done by the charity of the council. Of the council.
Well, you see, just as an FYI, I can let the town go, I won't only leave that week, I'm going to miss the 3rd and 4th, unfortunately. Which is ideal, I know.
Don't worry, we can, we obviously give you apologies. I think it probably needs to meet on that time. The timeframe's in mind. You can give your apologies, it'll be fine. So with regards to the items suggested for the agenda on the 24th, we've got, so you just want to
I've just noted local plan zero ahead. Exactly, that's just to be
Yeah, for the 3rd of June. So we're happy to propose those and formally put on the agenda?
Can I just
Yes.
Go back to what I was saying, we can, we do also on the agenda.
Yeah, we can do, yes, of course. You can, we can invite them. I'll, I'll catch them in Shire Hall and give them an extra come down. So we've got the, we've got those items to go on the agendas. I'm looking for a proposal to put those on, or any more views? If not, then can someone propose them for me? Proposed by Councillor Toft, seconded by Councillor Fennec, all those in favour? Motion carried. So those items will go on the agenda, agenda for the 3rd of June. It would be a 7 o'clock location to be confirmed. And then finally, item 25, date to the next meeting, to note that the next meeting of the town council will be on the 3rd of June 2021, 7 o'clock, for the date, the venue is to be confirmed. Notice that, whereas, whereas in favour?
I'm just asking if I can just take a photograph from that end of the hall, everybody? For the Priory Hall to use for future reference for what the use of the hall's been used for.
Yes. Close the meeting. So take the votes. So the meeting is closed.
I'll stop recording.